Called order the city council work session for East Grand Forks for Tuesday, September 13th is now five o'clock. Did city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Vetter.
Here.
Dale Holmes.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
President.
Brian Larson.
Here.
Does turn the quorum. Number one, discussion on memo and recommendation regarding asphalt plant. Mr. Murphy, you want to start with that, please, sir?
Thank you. I'll just give a brief overview of this. As we're aware, there was a violation that was brought forward to the city council's attention. Based on that, the council went into, put together a subcommittee to review the infractions, what the ramification should be, and to come up with a recommendation for any types of sanctions or changes to the special use permit. So with that, the subcommittee has met, and they have come up with three recommendations. First one being a five-year probationary period, two, monthly inspection reports that are required by the MPCA to include the city on those, and three, annual emissions stack testing for the asphalt plant, which would be tied to the probationary period of five years. So that is staff report, and we'll certainly take any questions that the council may have regarding what the ramifications of those might be, how they could be implemented, those types of things.
I think I'd clarify a couple of things, too, on this. With the number two, their monthly inspections reports given, those are the reports that they already are required to do, the reporting. So it's nothing that we are asking them to do above and beyond what they have to do for the MPCA. It's just that we, before, were not asking them to give them to us, but this is asking them monthly to give us those reports so that we have them on our hand. They do need to keep those for their records, and then when MPCA asks for them, they do need to turn those into them. It's not like they have to turn them in every day to them or every month to them. It's upon request from MPCA. So just want to clarify that. The five-year probationary period is something that was discussed at length of, is this something we should be doing? Is this five years? Is it two years? Is it three? I mean, we had a lengthy discussion on it. I think the recommendation of the five-year came up and came to the forefront of having that, and that's why the recommendation of that, number one, is there. The annual testing is something that we talked about. One of the discussions that we had with it was, first thing that came up was monetary, how much is this going to cost to do? How much is this going to be for them to do every year? And I guess that's what I'd like to have discussion on, number three, with Zavrels here and also with the council, just to make sure we walk through it, have understanding. You know, they're required every three years to have it. This would be during that time period, they would only have to additional three of them. It wouldn't be five, every year that you're doing two of the other ones. So that'd fall in there. It's my understanding, after 18 months of operation, you have to have one done anyway, if I'm correct. So, I mean, it's not as doom and gloom, or we're not trying to make it impossible for them to operate. These are just recommendations that we're bringing back to the council to have discussion on, and also ask questions if Zavrels like to give some input on it. This is a work session, so it's, we'd have that. So if anybody has any questions, please ask. If you want clarification, if it's a legality question, Mr. Gelsic can answer that. But this is, what we want to do is have an open discussion on this between us and the, so, Mr. Riepel.
Just a reminder that those annual tests are by law, the company has to provide them to the MPCA, correct?
So if we do require it, they actually do have to turn those over to the MPCA also. It's my understanding.
That is what I was told by the MPCA. That is correct.
Question, in the order of the packet. I know that the timeline sheets follow the top sheet that we're covering now. Are you going to jump to timeline after this?
We can, if you want, if you want to go through those.
If you wouldn't mind just talking through that. I think that is something you guys have put together side by side, and I think it's important to just have that. It's in the packet, in the agenda and packet for today. I think it's appropriate to just walk through that.
Okay. Sir, if you want me to read through those real quick? Okay, I'll read through them here real quick. Should not take too long. So I have them broken down. On the left side is the special use permit timeline, and on the right is the violation timeline, which occurred at the Deep River Falls plant. So with that, starting on, it looks like June 14th, 2017, is when the Plant 1 began operation at that location. July 16th is when we show that Plant 2 began operation. On September 11th of 2020, the MPCA issued a request for information letter, RFI, requesting Zavrels to evaluate whether new source performance standards apply to HMA plants 1 and 2. On November 20th of 2020, the Zavrels explained via email to MPCA that NSP standards applied to its facilities, and it had some maintenance and repair records of its asphalt equipment. Then again, also on November 20th, 2020, Zavrels notified MPCA via email that they had failed to conduct particulate matter performance testing on Plants 1 and 2 drum bag houses. On May 25th of 2021, Zavrels conducted a particulate matter PM performance test on Plant 2's bag house. Test showed that the emissions exceeded the limits by 705%. See, September 14th of 2021, the Zavrels conducted a PM test on Plant Number 2 that showed it was in compliance with permit limits. On October 20th of 2021, the Zavrels filed the annexation petition to bring the property into the city. November 24th, 2021, notice of public hearing for annexation was posted. December 8th, 2021, notice of petition to annex was sent to the property owners. January 5th, 2022, Zavrels emailed MPCA copies of all available records for Plants 1 and 2. January 18th of 2022, there was a public hearing on annexation. February 1st, 2022, annexation ordinance was adopted by council. March 11th, 2022, state approved the annexation. March 15th, 2022, Zavrels applied for a special use permit, and Planning and Zoning held a public hearing on special use permit. Oh, excuse me. On April 14th, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning held a public hearing on special use permit application, and on April 19th, the city council held a public hearing on special use permit application. April 22nd, 2022, the meeting was held with Zavrels to discuss restrictions, and on April 26th, 2022, the council discussed potential May 3rd, 2022, council discussed approval of permit. May 11th, 2022, MPCA files the administrative penalty order. May 17th, 2022, the resolution for approval of the SUP is signed by the council. June 16th, 2022, Zavrels responded to the penalty order and paid the fine. June 27th, 2022, the MPCA corrective action was completed by the Zavrels. And July 14th, 2022, MPCA issues the press release regarding the violation. So that's the timeline.
There a certain thing you want to address in that, Mr. Mayor?
Only that we talk about it as a group, make sure that all of the things that we do going forward on this item are operating in full knowledge now of what really did take place, and that's how we do our best work, really, is, you know, having everything out in the light of day. I know there were members of the community that wanted to get that timeline also, and it's no surprise. I mean, we've all had the chance to look at this for the last week or so since the packet came out, and so we can all make our own conclusions from what we see there. I think, if you ask me, the company that we're working with right here has an opportunity to actually go forward in better shape than they would have been without any of this. Because, you know, they're in close contact now with MPCA. They know everything that they need to know about compliance. They know where they need to get the supplies to capture the particulate to be in compliance. If this goes according to the way it looks like it's going to go, this may be one of the best things that could happen for us to have a really, really tidy asphalt plant, if there is such a thing in our community, as good as it can possibly be under the watchful eye of MPCA. And I have a feeling that's what others are considering here also, and perhaps it would be good to hear from others on this.
Just note, too, on that timeline, that on the September of 2021, I'll make sure everybody knows that they did do the compliance test and did pass, so I mean, they were in compliance. They did fix it, just so everybody knows that. I want to make sure that whoever's here and listening, watching, that they were in compliance after that test, so. And they'll say any questions regarding this? I don't know if Dave, or I don't know if you guys want to address some of the one, two, three recommendations, if you want to have the opportunity to come up and do that, and we can have a discussion with you on that. I appreciate it, so.
My first question.
If you would, come on, please. Take the microphone, please.
Well, on item number one, is, you know, the probationary period. What, they talk about a time link there, we understand that, but what is all involved with probationary period? Maybe that's more so for Ron, like, at the end of the five years or three years or whatever years that they would look to do, is there another decision that would be made about the permit at that time?
Or you're asking, okay. Essentially, what I understand, the probationary period is, right now, to make sure that everything remains in compliance, that the MPCA and primarily the emissions are in place. And then, at the end of the five-year probationary period, if there was, wasn't, if it was all complied with, the original terms of the special use permits are complied with, then the probationary period lapses. There wouldn't need to be any additional action on whether the special use permit is in place. It's in place, it's just that it's a probationary period right now. If there were numerous violations during that probationary period, then it would come back to this body, and they would make a decision on whether or not it was going to be revoked or rescinded.
Anytime within that five-year period?
Yeah, another question would be, when does the five years start?
The five years would start when the plant would become operational.
And I know Joe had some questions on stack testing. I'll let him.
So I guess the main thing with the probationary period would be, you know, with the large investment that this would be for us to procure another plant, we would potentially look at bringing, if we could only have this for five years, we'd potentially just bring in a plant that we currently own to run the site instead of looking to acquire another plant. You know, because that changes the economics. If it's not going to be a long-term situation, you know, we need a home for another plant.
Can I answer that real quick? I guess as far as the probationary period, I don't want to step on Ron's toes here, but how probationary period typically works then, so it really kind of extends the timeline for what we can do for, as far as revoking it, putting other sanctions onto it. So it's not like, you know, it's at the end of the five years, you know, that we'd have to revisit again what it is during that five years, if there are violations, if there are problems with the plant. The city, it gives the city more options and more leeway to potentially revoke the permit, those types of things. So it's not like it would end at the, it's not like it's just a five-year permit. It would be the same thing as a special use permit, however, we'd have the probationary period where, if there were violations, it would be easier for us to do some things like revoke it, those types of things.
Okay. So I know you mentioned in there to do an annual stack test. One of the concerns that we have with trying to run a stack test every year is, to do the stack test properly through the MPCA, you need to operate your plant at worst-case scenario, which means you need to run it at maximum capacity, and that needs to be ran at three different one-hour intervals with at least one hour in between. So you're looking at a full day of running at maximum capacity. And, you know, depending on the size of the plant that is, that could be a 2,500 to 3,000-ton day, which around here, you, there aren't, the projects aren't large enough to handle that much output. You know, you would need a county road or a highway project to be able to produce that much asphalt to go on the ground. So, you know, the cost of the test would be, you know, to get the third-party consultant up, you know, that's about $10,000 roughly, you know, give or take, depending on. It's the coordination between, you know, the 30-day notification of letting the MPCA know, lining up that third-party testing agency, and then making sure that you have a project that it's, that will be viable for a test, and then making sure that those three things come together, and then, you know, hoping that it doesn't rain, because, you know, if you can't, if it rains for part of that day, you know, that test is void, so then you got to, you know, line up another day or another test or another project for it to work out. So it's a, it's kind of a, it's one of those things that's more of an anomaly, I think, to make sure that it works and to get your plant running at full capacity for that entire time.
Joe, if that's a problem, how can you run the two tests that are required by the state? We have to do one 18 months in, and then you got to do another one three years later.
Yeah. The first one you need to run within 180 days.
180 days, yeah.
Yeah. I'm not aware that you need to run another one within 18 months.
Excuse me, it was 180 days, and then you got to do one three years after that point?
Yeah. The MPCA puts out the frequency of the testing, the stack testing, individually with each permit. So depending on what plant is operating, it's a plant-specific frequency of the stack tests.
But if you're having problems doing, getting that much volume, how are you going to run those two tests?
Well, that's where you try to find a job that it works for, you know, and you bid a job that it works for and hopefully get the job, you know, and then, and maybe it's something that you do, if you have a job and even though you're not due for a test, but you know it could be a potential test, maybe you do it early, you know. Otherwise, if it's running out over the time, you ask for a variance with the MPCA to say, we have this lined up for this project, and this is the one we'd like to use, and it may go, yeah, it's really, it's a challenge. It's a difficult, it's, it would be a lot easier for, if it's a stationary 24-hours, 365-day operation, you know. For our industry, it's a tougher thing to manage.
Right. I understand. It's just kind of skirting the whole issue that you have to have it done either way with those tests. That 180 days in, you have to have one.
Yes. You do have to have one.
And then three years later, you got to have one. And three years after that, you got to have another one. Because they're usually every three years, right?
Yeah, depending on what, depending on.
And the state could come in and two and say they want to have one and two, right? If they really feel they want to do that?
The MPCA could say, yeah, depending on what your permit said. They could say it's one, they could say it's two, they could say it's three, they could say after, it's such a low-volume plant that after you run your first one, you might not need to do it for five years or 10. But it's specific for each permit. Yeah. That's the difficulty with adding this to it, is, you know, the potential cost. I guess if you need to run the test and you don't have a job, then you just pour 3,000 tons of asphalt out on the ground, and that, you know, that could cost hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Or use it to pave the road so that you don't have the dust.
Any questions for Joe on the testing?
I mean, the subcommittee, when they met, how come they picked that instead of following the MPCAs?
Yeah, I could address that, Dave. You know, when the subcommittee met, we just kind of had a nice, open discussion. I think all of us here on the council have been hearing a lot of concerns from our residents after the press release of the violation. You know, I think certainly that there was a trust issue that was put forth with that, and we've done a good job of lining out the timelines, showing how you were within compliance, also showing that you did have the opportunity to disclose that issue during this process, chose not to, and, you know, that was your choice. And so as we went through this process, I can only speak for myself now, we wanted to find a way to instill confidence in our public that this plant will always be operating within environmental compliance. And one of the ways we thought we could do that was to ensure that the additional air quality testing was instilled, especially over the first few years here as that plant's being established. And if we show that there's a great track record of environmental compliance going above and beyond, we think that we'll have that public confidence back. And so that's how, and through a number of discussions, that's how we came to the five-year period. That's how we came to the monthly turnover of the documentation, and that's how essentially we ended up with the three additional annual tests. And annual just seemed like a practical way to choose a timeframe. We understood the 180 days, we understood the three years. I don't know the MPCA's rationale for why they choose three years. I'm sure they have some documentation based on the size of the plant and the output, but we thought that yearly would be the right way to, as I said, kind of re-instill confidence in this council and in RJ Zavrels here in East Grand Forks.
Yeah. What about, you know, the going above and beyond makes sense, but I think the point we were trying to make is, is that if we don't have the opportunity to produce enough tonnage on a project, that we can't take a stack test, what does that look like to the public then, when we don't have the projects that we can get the test done? Doesn't it look like even, as a business and as the council, if we can't take those tests because we don't have the projects to do it, doesn't that look worse?
Well, you know, my response to that, and it was touched on a little bit earlier, is, you know, if that situation had happened, or does happen, say, on year three after your 180-day test, it sounds like there is a variance that you can request with MPCA. No one's going to ask, I don't believe, RJ Zavrels to just have a max asphalt production day and just waste it just to get the test. I don't think either party would assume that's reasonable, you know, and it wouldn't accomplish our goals. And so I think your comment is good. We would want to refer back to the MPCA and understand how they handle that type of situation during the MPCA-required testing periods, and apply that to our five-year probationary period.
A question. In the monthly reporting that we would get, would it tell us the volume of projects that you've had in that month?
You know, with the monthly reporting, you know, we, and I think Mark touched on this earlier, too, is that we keep all of that in-house, and then when the MPCA needs it, and they don't really tell you when, they just, they want you to always store it and have it on file, and when they request it, then it's your time to give it to them. And so we don't turn things over to them annually. We turn things over to them when they request it.
Just so you know where I'm coming from with that question, you know, if there was never a day that you got close to the max capacity of that plant, what's the likelihood that you're also going to be putting out a lot of particulate in that whole construction season, right? If you never got close to capacity ever for that whole construction season, is there a chance that you're going to be emitting beyond your capacity either? That, I mean, I'm throwing it out as a question.
Yeah, I think that's generally the point, is that if it's a small enough asphalt plant. So we're an option D permit, which means we're under 50 tons of particulates a year. We are also, right now, under 25 tons of particulates a year, so that means that we have less reporting requirements than the 25 to 50. So we are required to submit our monthly records at the end of the season, and once a year. If we were between 25 and 50, it'd be a 12-month rolling average where you would submit it every month, and then it would calculate the last 12 months. So because we're less than 25, we submit it at one time during the year.
Does it show each day during that period, or does it just show the cumulative total?
The month. Yeah, it's by the month.
Exactly. I mean, these recommendations and discussions that we want to have, especially on the testing, because we want to know what, you know, if there's an issue, if you're going, if they say every three years you have to do it, and you have to ask them, oh, we don't have a big project till three years and three months, or four months, whatever it may be, you know, there's things that we need to have understanding of and discussion of, okay, is the annual one and not have, don't have a big project, I mean, how are we going to address that? I guess it's something that we need to think about. And, because like Brian said, Mr. Larson said, we're not going to want you to waste anything. We're not going to have you waste money to make sure that we're doing something, you know, and just have it just lay there. That's not going to be profitable for you guys, and it's not going to be good, so.
I don't know if it's an option, but, you know, for us, is there another way other than doing an annual stack test that would help reinstall the confidence of the council with our emissions reporting? You know, maybe there would be some sort of tonnage that would trigger an additional test, not just an annual one. You know, since, like Joe said, we are a low-operating tonnage plant, maybe there would be, maybe the council or the subcommittee would be interested in looking at that as well, a certain tonnage that would trigger where that is. So, you know, some years are different than others with the amount of tons we produce. Just trying to be good stewards, too.
Sure.
Because there is some financial, there's some financial undertaking on ours to get those tests done as well.
You know, this got brought to work session, so this isn't something that I think we, and you're not going to be operational until next year, anyway.
Correct.
In my mind, you know, these questions and discussions now, I think, is it something that we keep working at and looking at and working with RJ Zavrels and trying to figure out, and we still keep going forward, but I'm not looking for next week to come to a vote. I'm not, I don't want that, because I don't think the knee-jerk reaction, we need to have more discussion on this and walk through it. So I think my thought process is that if we want and to sit down and walk through those different scenarios and different options and stuff like that, is something that we need to do with you and go back to, you know, I'm going to suggest that we go back to the subcommittee and have another meeting and work with RJ Zavrels to have more discussions on this, because I don't think, like I said, I wouldn't want this going forward to next Tuesday to have a vote on it, because it's, that's not being, not doing it correctly. I just want to be out there and want to make sure this is proper, and it's going to work for all of us. for all of us as a city and for RJ Zaveral's also, so.
Yeah, we'd be open to that, for sure.
Everybody's okay with that also, or?
And it's really helpful for us to know the constraints that you're under as far as, you know, it's not just a matter of running a stack test, you need the right project on the right day, in the right several-hour interval, and that's how your costs can run up. You know, we were hearing costs of $40,000, $50,000 to run a stack test, and where's that number come from? It comes from if you have to waste that material, right? If you don't have a project for that material and it has to be wasted, that's your $50,000 stack test right there. So we don't want, I mean, we're in a partnership with our residents and our businesses here in our community, it's got to be a win-win, and so we're not here to make it onerous or anything like that.
Any else have any questions? Is everybody's okay if we bring it back to the subcommittee and bring it back for another work session down the road? Nods and no nods?
You want to vote, true.
We're not voting, you can't. No, sir, you cannot. Sir, you're not being recognized, so don't even ask. We're going to bring it back to the subcommittee, we'll come back to another work session. So I appreciate the Zaveral's coming in, having discussions, and go from there. I'll move on to number two, request to file plan and specifications and advertise for bids in 2022, city project number six for pedestrian improvements in Bigland Road and 13th Street Southeast. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we have completed plans for the 2022 city project number six, pedestrian improvement project at Bigland and 13th, which, as you recall, is essentially installation of the HOCS system along with some minor ADA improvements. Those plans have been approved at this time by MINDOT, so we have been given authorization to proceed with advertising of the project. So at next week's council meeting, we'll be filing plans and specs for that project, setting a bid date for 10:00 a.m. on October 18th, and then we'd like to just get authorization to proceed with advertising of that project, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Emery? Mr. Larson?
Just a quick question, Steve. As far as you know on material lead times with this bidding schedule, you think we'll have the HOCS signal up in time for the fall 2023 school year to begin?
That's our hope. What I was hearing is there was about a six-month lead time on some of that equipment, so, you know, if we can get a bid in October, get a contractor on board, you know, I would hope we would be able to get through shop drawings and stuff by the end of the year so they can get materials ordered. So, you know, I'm hoping we're starting construction probably about June, you know, and done by the first part of August.
Great, thank you.
So, yep.
Any else have anything? See you, sir. Thank you so much. Number three, review of the 2023 federal project with potential assessments. Mr. Emery, you're solo.
Thank you again. So at the work session on August 23rd, you know, and we discussed basically the different proposals, you know, I think it was decided by the council, we would move ahead with proposals one and two, and then basically the high priority areas of proposal number three, which is on Demers Avenue. At that work session, it was kind of brought up about the possibility of looking at assessing a portion of the project cost, kind of to be consistent with, you know, what we've done on the mill and overlay, seal coal projects, you know, which, which those projects, you know, have been assessed at 100%. You know, where this one, we're looking at probably more of a 20% to 30% assessment, which is kind of consistent with what our assessment policy says. It states 30% assessment on state aid reconstruction projects, so. So with that said, I did go back and kind of look at that, you know, the possibility of assessing it. So again, I looked at like proposal one, which is Fifth Avenue Northeast on the north side of Highway Two between 15th and 20th. We had an estimated project or construction cost there of, you know, about 553,000, and then putting in all the soft costs, contingencies, you know, we come to a total project cost of about 719,000 roughly. And then I looked at, again, if we were to assess 30% of it, 20% of it, you know, what that dollar amount would be that we assess, and then looked at, you know, how would we assess that as far as front and end benefit goes, to kind of come up with some estimated assessment rates. Based on that, you can kind of see there, you know, what the estimate assessment rate would be based on a 30% and a 20% assessment. And then just kind of for comparison purposes, I did go back to the 2017 project where we assessed, you know, Batum's overlay, and you can kind of see there what the front benefit and the end benefit costs were, you know, again, I just wanted to give you some type of comparison. So again, as I looked at that, you know, proposal number one, again, north of Highway Two, there's a lot of repairs, you know, I could see that potentially, you know, being able to be assessed. As we look at proposal number two, which is really south of Highway Number Two there, or south of Highway Two, a large majority of the work that we're doing there is kind of right in that intersection just south of Highway Two, kind of in the frontage road area, so I think it'd really be hard to, you know, who do you assess that to? So, you know, my opinion, I felt that the, you know, that work should at least just be paid through the federal sub-target dollars, stated allocation funds. Same thing when we look at proposal number three, again, being we're looking at just the high priority areas, you know, we're looking at areas, you know, where the old railroad tracks came across there, we're looking at a lot of ADA sidewalk work right out in front of City Hall, getting rid of the stamped concrete crosswalks, making some improvements to the sidewalks, the brick pavers right out front here. And then we're also doing just ADA improvements as far as getting the intersections ADA compliant. So again, with that one, I think it'd be hard to assess that one. So again, my thought was, you know, we just cover that, that cost with, again, federal funds, state aid funds. So, and I just kind of did lay out, again, if the council wants to proceed with an assessment project, you know, we're going to have to follow all the state statutes for assessing. And really, that first step then would be the city council would have to authorize, you know, us to prepare a report of feasibility. You know, we'd bring that report of feasibility back to the council, file that, and then again, we'd have to conduct an improvement hearing. And then essentially after the improvement hearing, then, you know, you would decide to move ahead with plans and specs or not move ahead with plans and specs, which, you know, hopefully we wouldn't go that direction, because we don't want to, you know, jeopardize our funding, but. So again, you know, my recommendation at this time is if you do still want to proceed with an assessment project, you know, I think the next step would be just to authorize us to complete a report of feasibility. So I think with that, we can kind of just open it up for any discussion too that you may have for me.
Mr. Emery, can you, forgive me, I was going to look this up earlier and I didn't have a chance. Proposals number two and three, what were the totals on that, the estimations? Do you have that, sir? I already put you on the spot, I should have.
I don't have that on me right, I'm sorry.
Any questions, Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of questions, I guess first statement. If our policy for state aid is 30%, I would suggest or recommend using 30% as our number. Wondering on the parcel of the, I'm just looking at the Northwest Tech parcel, is there any, do they have, would they ever have any end benefit, or front benefit? Because it's, I mean, it's a giant parcel.
I think as far as the Northwest Technical College, I mean, I think if we were doing work north of 20th, 22nd there, 25th, 22nd, right? No, 20th, I'm sorry. So to me, if we were doing work north of 20th, you know, then the tech college property, I think would, you know, potentially get an end benefit, but, you know, and yeah, when you look at, you know, the different properties that, you know, are going to get potentially assessed here, I mean, we're really looking at five different properties is all we have, or five different property owners, I should say, you know.
Well, I'm just, I mean, when you look at the parcel that the tech is on, I thought you were supposed to go on the short end of the, of the lot, right? Like typically, we don't go on the long end, and the long end would be along Highway, or County Road 20, or 19, sorry.
I mean, typically.
And the short end would be on Fifth and on the frontage road, and there's a big chunk that's on neither, I guess, and it's on the other road. I guess, I'm just wondering, in this, I think we should probably figure out how we're going to assess that at some point in time, because you're going to constantly be going around, and they're always going to get end benefits instead of a front benefit, and they're not going to pay for their streets. I guess, I think we should have written down, this is when they're going to get front benefits and when they're not going to get front benefits, because I think they should get a front benefit on this, because according to our, when we usually give people front benefits, it's when the short end of their property is adjacent to that street, and that's how this chunk of their parcel is, but.
Yeah, and typically, what we say is, I mean, yeah, the front benefit is typically the shortest side of the lot or whatever.
Which this is.
It, it does get really tricky on some of these real big parcels, you know. I guess like, you know, when you look at the trailer court on the north side of 17th, or you look at, you know, the city property on the north side, or the south, the south side of 17th or the north side of 15th, you know, really what I looked at is those parcels there, when 15th Street Northeast was reconstructed, and when 17th Street Northeast was reconstruction, you know, those properties got a front benefit off of 17th or 15th, so, you know, that's how I kind of made the determination on those large parcels, then that as far as Fifth Avenue goes, they would just get an end benefit for that, because you can't give them a front benefit, front benefit for two different streets, basically.
Except if they're, if they do actually front three different streets or four different streets, like, my point is, is it's a special thing, instead of just on a whim in the middle of a different process, we choose, this is how we're designating it, and then five years from now or 10 years when we come to do another street, we're like, well, you know, we'll just give them a side or end benefit, because this is how we're doing it. We should probably have it, whether we want to, you know, put it down in some sort of a resolution or something, but for special cases like this, we should have, or even just to have a list of how we're going to do these special cases, because if you look at all the sides of this property, this is clearly the shortest end of its property. So it's not that I want Northland to pay more or less, but they should pay the correct amount. So that's another issue. Second, or the third issue I would say is, I think that we should still try to assess on the other two portions of the project. I believe that there's considerable amount of pavement that goes inside in front of properties or on the side of properties there, that we should be able to recoup some assessment for. If we want to back out, I could see making a case for backing out the ADA, but you just take that number out of your total and divide the rest out by the pavement, and you should be able to have it. Obviously, it's not going to be a huge number, because there's a lot of institutional frontage, especially on the second project, where, you know, we have City Hall and all that kind of stuff, and it doesn't, it's, we never pay ourselves, or we end up paying our portion of it anyway. So I don't, it's, I don't see any reason why we can't add those assessments in. I, I look at that, that section from Highway Two South, I mean, you're probably doing between, I mean, from the DHC to the interstate, I mean, you're probably doing 30% of that street, you know, I mean, and then if you took 30% of that, I think those businesses along there should have to pay for that, but that might be odd. Thank you.
Mayor?
When Mr. Demers first brought the idea of doing a special assessment for this project at our last meeting, at our last work session, it didn't seem right to me at first. It seemed like a little late in the game to be bringing that idea, but as we talked about it, and the more I thought about it, it is a matter of fairness with all the other projects that we have done or would do, and I really do believe it's the right thing to do. And I also agree that as long as we're going to comply with our own street repair policy, we better go to that 30%, not the 20. I think we need to go to the 30 and just stick to our policy, because, again, it's fairness and it's a template we can use going forward. Anytime we do a project like this, we're going to be able to just fall back on the exact wording of our, of our street replacement policy. And so I have to agree with Mr. Demers, it is the right thing to do. I, my own thought on the smaller pieces of work would be more in line with our engineer to say, this would fall under normal street maintenance, not as an assessment project. But again, that's for all of our discussion, and let's see, as for his, Mr. Demers considering, should we take another look at, at front benefit or end benefit as for special assessments? It wouldn't be bad to come back around on that another time, but I think for this project, the way that it's laid out, that we could go with the, on Fifth, we could go with the benefit as distributed in these diagrams by our engineer. So I agree wholeheartedly, the 30% is the right thing to do. It's still a huge bargain for anybody along here to have 70% of it covered by other funds, and just looking at the outcome that we're going to have, to get rid of all that broken-up pavement and have it all be tight and solid for a long time, it's going to be a big deal. So that's, that's my two cents. Thanks.
I think the precedent's already been set, so I, I don't think there's any discussion on the 30%. So.
I think everybody's on board with 30%, I don't have a problem with that, because that's what it's set in our policy, so I don't have a problem.
If I may, so if that's the case, then is the council then directing us to bring forward a proposal to authorize a feasibility report for this?
I think so. I think we'd want direction to as far as, you know, assessments, if it's proposals one, two, and three, or just proposal one we're going to assess. You know, again, I guess just looking at it, I think it's going to be hard to show who really benefits from proposal two and three, so, you know.
I'm okay with the way you proposed it personally, I would agree with the mayor how you proposed it.
What's that?
The way you proposed it is what, that's my opinion.
Okay.
I don't know about everybody else, just, I mean, everybody else has an opinion, so.
What's the difficulty in showing the benefit for the people on Fifth between Highway Two and the DHC?
Well, again, I mean, if you look, a lot of that work is right, right in the intersection. You know, I, I just don't know who you assess. Are you going to assess everyone up and down Fifth Avenue Northeast between Highway Two and 10th Street? Or who are you going to try to assess for that intersection?
I think you assess where you're doing the work. I mean, from, I guess, my computer's going slow, but I guess there's probably how many parcels there.
Yeah, while you're pulling that up, Mark, you know, I, I think some of the challenges with assessing that, that intersection there at the frontage road and Fifth Avenue Northeast is, you know, I, I myself haul sugarbeets, you know, right, right through there, and I know Trans Systems runs through there, and so that, that area is, gets a lot of truck traffic passing through there, you know, as part of one of our major economic drivers here. And the, the cost to replace that concrete, if it was assessed, you know, simply to the property owners right there, I'm not necessarily sure that's the fair scenario, but I would want to refer back to the street assessment policy and, and see if this is, if this type of scenario is addressed in there. of scenario is addressed in there.
I would-
No.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, our policy's only a page in, yeah.
I mean-
Gotta try.
If you look at, you know, from basically 10th to the highway, there's one, two, three, four, five parcels, and one of them is owned by Water and Light. So, I don't understand, yes, there is traffic that comes from other places, but that's why they get a 70% discount on the streets that are abutting their stuff. That's why we name these things state aid streets. That's why we name these trunks, because they get nailed for, or they get nailed first, and we apply additional dollars that they, you know, they can assess. They do get a benefit, it's not 100% benefit, there's other people that are, that pass through, but I don't see how it's hard to assess the five properties across there.
All of Fifth is used for beat traffic, though, even way down by the college. It's, it's-
Obvious, Paul.
But that's, my point is, is that these people already get a discount, they get a 70% discount, because they have this traffic in front of them. They also have a huge benefit, because they get trucks that drive by them, that they do business with, or they use for their warehousing, you know, all this other stuff, so it's not like these are, are in a bad spot. All we're, all I'm asking them to do is pay what everybody else in town pays, actually less, because-
I think what we're really asking ourselves is, where's that line between a spot repair? So the city, we replace panels in concrete streets all the time as a citywide cost. We don't specially assess panels being replaced here and there throughout the city, and we do many of them every year. So where's that line between a spot repair of, let's say, a panel, or a, a section of panels, or a, a bigger project that, that then becomes for special assessment? Where is that line? You know, that's really what we're talking about. It's unfortunate that we're having the conversation about one project in particular, you know, would be nice to sit back without one project in play, and say, let's figure out where that line is. You know, how large an area are we willing to do under a spot repair or replacement? And at what point does it have to be assessed? I think, really, it's, it's down to that.
I agree. I think, I mean, in my opinion, it's definitely when it's more than one or two panels, and this is, I mean, how many panels are there, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven? I don't know, I can't even tell, but, I mean, there's probably, I don't even know how many square feet, I mean, it's a giant repair. I would say it's similar to if you're gonna do, you know, a seal coat.
What's kinda tricky, Mr. Demers, is that chunk is big, and then these panels are panels. So this, the right side of the diagram looks like the panel repairs we would do, and that intersection is, is a bigger blob.
Right, but when you're paying, you're paying, it's a system, right? A street is a system, it's not one piece here and one piece there, it all works together. So when you do this, it's repairing the entire system of that street. Same thing as when we do a seal coat, there might be areas of that street that are perfectly fine on the side, but the crown is, you know, kinda fading out, or whatever, so we come down and we do the whole thing. We, we charge everybody for every square foot of that street, because it gets done, whatever, you know, and it repairs the entire system. My point is, is this is, I agree, there are points, and we don't wanna come to the place where Jason has to come in, and they've got an acute thing where there's one panel that needs to be replaced, or whatever, we have to do assessment hearings, and we wanna stretch out that dollar for a block, and try to figure out how we're gonna charge everybody $15 and assess it over 20 years, or something. We don't wanna get to that either, but I would, I would say, in this case, this, in my mind, is clearly a project that's an assessment job. I don't, I mean, I don't know what, how you wanted, or how we would define that, but I think you're right, we should figure out what that definition is.
But, I think, again, when you look at a mill and overlay, though, I mean, you know, whether it's residential area, commercial area, I mean, everyone's essentially seeing that benefit right in front of their front door. We're here now, you're asking, I'm just gonna use for as an example, that you, you're asking Water and Light to pay for an intersection that's two blocks away, you know, they're not seeing the benefit right in front of their property. So again, I, I just think, you know, you're really opening yourself up for a lot of contention, I think, and, and again, that's why I just, I would not recommend assessing it, but it's totally up to you.
Mr. Better?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would argue that the whole industrial park should be assessed for that project, because almost everyone in the industrial park goes through that intersection to get to their place. In comparison, our neighbors to the west of us, I owned a piece of property four blocks off of Cherry, and when the city redid Cherry Street, my property was included in that assessment roll. The assessment was $14 to redo Cherry. So it makes sense to broaden the assessment rollout, because then the benefit to their property, they have a less likelihood of arguing that my property value didn't go up by the same value that I paid for that assessment. And those state aid streets, they're not used, that's why Mr. Demers is right, that's why we're doing the 70%, and only assessing 30% is because it's used by more than just the people on that street, and that begs that the assessment should be a wider assessment than just the front and, and benefits.
The only problem with that is then you end up with-
You got what?
Improvement district.
Exactly, it's illegal in Minnesota.
You can't do that in Minnesota.
Yep, that is your improvement district.
I know, they do that for storm, and, you know, they do all kinds of stuff in North-
In North Dakota, it's perfectly legal.
I agree, I think if you could do a whole area, it'd be great, but we can't-
Yep.
We can't do that right now, anyway, or, according to what I-
Would be logical, I will agree with that, but it would be illegal.
I would wanna look at the definition of an improvement district, then. I was under the impression improvement district is citywide.
I think it's just a zone of benefit, well, yeah, maybe Mr. Gallsted would look into that for us.
And in the interest of moving things on, is it possible to do the report of feasibilities for all three of them, and we can have a separate discussion about how we wanna proceed with these type of kinda intermediate, I don't know what you would call it, but an intermediate type thing, where it's, it's not quite a full reconstruction, but it's certainly not a simple patch and replacement type of project, or how, how we wanna go about defining that? Or is that not something that we can two-track?
Let's say we, let's say we had them look at the Fifth Avenue there, I mean, what properties are we gonna assess? Are we gonna go halfway down the street, and then you're done?
I guess, I thought, where the project is done, so you basically have-
Bring from the towing company?
Yep, or, I mean, if you, if you thought that you wanted to go to the Water and Light, I mean, you could probably include that if you wanted to, but, I don't know, I mean, I think the whole west side of the road is one parcel, and then you have the Water and Light, then you have towing company, then you have, there's a ease, it looks like it's a, it's probably easement for a road, maybe, and then you have-
Not a problem if we take a look at it, I mean, it's just, you can take a look at it, it doesn't say we're gonna do it, but if we can take a look at it, then I guess would be beneficial to see what actually they would be assessed, and- Is it okay with you, Steve? So we can look at that on proposal two, and then proposal three, we're agreeing that... Are you okay with number three, Mr. Demers?
Am I okay with it? No, I already said, no, no, I'm okay with it, I think, should we figure it out? What should we, should we assess it or not? I mean, I guess, I could see pulling some of the ADA stuff out of it, because that's part of a separate program that we have, but the pavement, I think, is-
I think, I think a lot, you know, if you look at it, too, you know, the stamped concrete crosswalks, you know, we did all of those along Demers Avenue last summer, that was not assessed. You know, I don't know that we can assess properties right adjacent to the railroad tracks, I mean, I, I don't see that that should become their issue, that the railroad tracks were pulled out at one point to there, and, you know, have become a, an issue with rideability. Again, I just, I don't see the benefit of assessing that one, because we kinda set a precedence a little bit last summer on Demers Avenue.
Can I, can I ask a question? Do you know about the, the stamped concrete, you're talking about the, the decorative portions of it?
Yeah, the decorative portions, like right in front of City Hall. So last summer, we replaced those on Demers Avenue from Fourth to the Surly Bridge, and that, you know, none of that work was assessed.
I can't remember, where, where did we, where did we pay for that from?
We actually got grant funding from MnDOT for that, for, I think it was 80% of the cost.
And then the ADA portions of this are, that's being paid for from a separate fund, not the, is that correct?
In, in the, I mean, the past few years-
I mean, in this particular project here.
What's that?
In this particular project.
The ADA portion?
Yeah.
It would be paid with state aid allocation funds.
Okay, okay, I, I, 'cause I, I think, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I think I'm, I'm kinda gathering the direction from the council here, so, if, if there is a consensus on that, I, I think I know what they're, what, what you're talking about for the Demers portion of this, you know, meaning the, like, the, the added cost for the decorative and for the ADA, so I guess, I think I understand what you're asking for, for the, for the assessment, the, for the potential assessment, it can still always be adjusted, so I think what we're, for the feasibility report, I think what, what they're asking for is the, of the, the street, all the, the costs that are involved in that, maybe say, other than the decorative part, would be put into there and assessed. So I think I understand what the council is saying.
Yeah, and again, if you, you know, if you look at, you know, what was identified as those high priority areas, you know, if you take out the crosswalks, you do take out the stamped concrete crosswalks, you know, there isn't a lot left there, other than what, you know, that big area where the railroad tracks were, you know, and again, you know, probably assess-
Well, that is an improvement portion of it, we would, yeah, so-
I think you assess from basically 10th to Central.
It's just what's in the yellow boxes, right?
Right, but I mean, 10th to Central is pretty extensive, you could assess all the properties on that.
Thank you.
What, yeah, Central, right? And you're basically getting a whole new street there, and I disagree that it's not-
And that's for the railroad tracks.
Correct.
Right. I guess out of those portions, I mean, I guess, what actually true costs are not the crosswalks, not the railroad, I mean, I guess, it's in the yellow, everything looks to me that most of it is, only a small portion of it is only not a crosswalk or a railroad's crossing, I mean, good, yeah.
I guess I don't care that it's a railroad, but that's, that's Steve's thing.
And I guess there's seven people that sit in the council, too, Mr. Demers, and-
Yeah, I'm just saying, but it's not mine.
I understand that, but I don't think we need to do anything in Demers Avenue, I just leave it, I think you look at the proposal two, that's my opinion. Anybody else can have their own opinion and speak it, please.
Sounds good to me.
Have we answered the question about the south side of Fifth, along Highway Two? That's the other one that we would look for some consensus to not have our engineer chasing his tail unnecessarily.
I already decided that.
Which way did we go on that one?
He's gonna bring back the assessment, okay.
So you'll bring it both ways for an, as an option?
So basically, the way I understand it, we would probably look at assessing all of the properties from 10th up to Highway Two for that work, then, I mean-
Correct.
Yeah.
So then I guess-
And I can bring that forward.
So then I guess for, for us, for our staff, then the remaining thing is, what is the consensus for Demers?
10th to Central.
What's that?
10th to Central, for that chunk there. Everything else is in front of City Hall, almost.
Yeah, you're gonna get consensus? I don't think you will.
I mean, I mean, I mean, it's a majority, if we did, to make it happen.
I mean, we're gonna come back and look at it, right? We're gonna see how this shakes out on Demers, just like we're gonna look at South Highway Two.
So I guess maybe the question, the direction I would need is, next week, when we authorize the report of feasibility, I think we just need direction, if you, you know, if you want to look at potentially assessing South of Highway Two on Fifth, we would include that as part of the report of feasibility, then. You know, if we agreed, or disagreed not to assess the work on, let's say, Demers Avenue, then we just wouldn't include that in the report of feasibility, but, you know, if there's consensus, you know, that we wanna assess that, then I guess that would just be part of the report of feasibility, so.
Sounds like the group wants an AB to either include or not include special assessments south on Fifth, okay? So they want an AB, yes or no, and, and give us that option at that time next week, and the same on just that box, or you could say the, the amount between 10th on Central Avenue, and where, where Central takes a right turn there, so the railroad track box, kind of an AB for that, too. You know, what would it look like if it's in? How much would be distributed to the adjacent properties or end benefits? And if it's out?
Yep.
And then we can make a final vote on that meeting, as to whether or not we would include those or not. If you could do an AB on those two, I think the group would appreciate that.
I can do that.
Is that kinda what y'all were thinking?
Yeah.
As long as we get the discounted rate.
Yeah, had a budget. Thank you.
All righty, move on to number four, discussion on golf course path damage. Mr. Storewell's not here, so Mr. Murphy, you're gonna handle this, or?
Yes, I will take this here, and hopefully this one won't be quite as controversial. This one should be a little bit easier than the last one. During this, this, flooding this last spring-
I got a question, though, on all of this stuff, are we submitting this to the MPO before we do all of this?
Why?
That's my question, because that was what my, my concern was the very first time on losing the federal funding.
Well, I, I guess the, the-
I'm just curious on that question.
This is before the MPO already, it, it went before the TAC committee, and it will be going to their MPO executive board. I did have some discussion with Ms. Halford about this, they don't particularly care as much where we get our portion of the funding.
Oh, I get that, so I'm just curious if that's where it is right now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Settle down.
So, so the, during the spring flooding on the north side over the, by the golf course there, where the, where the, that swale is in that flood control portion over there, we were having the backup, as you're all well aware, so the, the public works had to utilize the golf car, golf cart paths to get to those areas, set up the pumps, move pumps around, try to keep ahead of, of all the water that was backing up. And in the course of doing that, there was some damage done to the golf court, golf cart paths that were, the paved paths that were out there. So we did submit a claim with our insurance company, the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust, and we did have our insurance agent and our adjuster show up and, and review that, and there was a, two proposals for fixing that. The low proposal was for $63,600. The adjuster looked at that, said those golf paths were constructed shortly after the flood, so they're roughly 20 years old, and so in his estimation, they're half depreciated. So with that, he author, he's gonna authorize payment through the insurance for $31,800, which leaves another $31,800 unpaid. Public Works and the city has looked at, because of that, is, that was a, covered under the FEMA event, FEMA is reviewing the city's lease agreement with the, with Valley Golf, and will determine, based- the city's lease agreement with the, with Valley Golf and will determine, based on the agreement, whether or not they will issue funds to the city for the damage that was occurred for that second half. So the question becomes before the council is, if that is not the case, is that something that the, would be the city's responsibility to pay for that second half of that particular damage? If you remember, keep in mind that that property is owned by the city, it is leased to the golf court, golf course for their use. And I do know, City Attorney Galstead does have an opinion on this that he would like to share.
My, my opinion was only that, Jason came to me regarding this originally on whether or not it should even have been submitted to the insurance company. I indicated that it should be due to the fact that we're the landlord, they're the tenant, the landlord damaged the property that they're actually leasing. So since we were the ones that damaged it, I, I indicated that it should be something that the city would look at repairing. When it was submitted to the League of Minnesota Cities, they indicated it was what David just indicated about paying for it, however, there was a depreciation cost. Now, whether or not the city is going to pay over and above that, that's totally discretionary call. There's an argument on both sides of that, so that would be a discretionary call for the, the city council. And then, we're still, the, the decision is still out regarding FEMA on whether or not they're going to pay any of it, so. And, and then that being said, I don't know how the two work together, okay? Whether or not, if there's a payment by insurance, if that's something FEMA would still reimburse, I have no idea. So I haven't, I haven't been involved in that discussion. So I just, I just threw it back in your ballpark, it's all entirely up to you on whether or not you want to make the Valley Golf you know, pay the other, what, thirty-three thousand dollars, if that was the estimate, I'm not sure.
Thirty-one thousand eight hundred.
I guess, I know Jason's not here, maybe somebody else has this answer for me. Was the car path damaged before we used it?
I have no idea.
Yeah, that, that's an unknown.
It's a rhetorical question, I know, I have a feeling that you're going to say, no, it wasn't, so I, that's, that's my point I'm getting at, so. Guess if you want to state your name and.
Yep, my name's Dustin Hattlet, I'm the superintendent of the golf course. Particular damage that was done from the vehicles was not there before, in the year before. We put in fifteen thousand dollars in repairs, and some of the spots that was driven over were damaged that we just repaired. And I, I talked to Dylan, I call him the lift station guy over the years, and he called me and told me, can we put a pump out there? Yep, go ahead, I knew exactly what we're talking about, and then he needed a tractor out there to clean a culvert out, and I was good with that. And then I started getting other phone calls about other traffic going where there was no need to go. If you're familiar with the golf course, they drove around hole eight, seven, and six, which the issue was right by hole three. So, and most of the damage is going around eight, seven, and six. And one of my employees lives on the golf course, and he called me and told me there was three trucks that drove on back to back to back at the same time. So that's when I got kind of concerned about what was going on out there. Whether it's already happened or nothing I can do about it now. But then I think it all kind of calmed down the next day, the water went down.
I think the reason I asked the question is, if we caused a damage, I think the city's, and hopefully FEMA will chip in that our cost to, out of the city funds, or whatever funds we take out of, is responsible for it, then that's, I guess, my thoughts on it. I mean, if we did it, we should take care of it.
Thank you, Mr. President. In the lease agreement, are, obviously the, the property is East Grand Forks property, correct?
Correct.
Are the, the tra, the paths East Grand Forks property?
I don't know who put them in.
Well, I'm just, I mean, obviously they went in.
All I can say this is, any improvements that are made by the Valley Golf Course that are there at the termination of the lease, remain with the city of East Grand Forks. So I don't know who put them in or what they did, but any improvement that's still out there after the next sixty years or whatever, when the lease ends, if it's not renewed, remain with the property.
I just, I mean, I just didn't know, not even for this, I'm just curious about who's responsible for the maintenance and upkeep if, I mean, if these are twenty years old, when's the last time they've been, you know, overlaid or have they ever been, I mean, obviously you said there was some maintenance that you guys did.
Yep, we did some last year because it's starting to show its age. But the golf course put in the car path in two thousand and three, about the time when the place opened up. So then the golf course is continuing paying off its, its loan that it, it owes still.
So, and I don't know where six, seven, and eight are, could you tell me, I mean, I'm looking at a map, I don't know.
North.
Are they on the, are they part of the old course or the new course?
The new course.
They're part of the new course?
The new course, yeah.
So they're north of Twenty First or Twenty?
Across, I think it's River Road.
Yeah.
Correct, correct.
Oh, they're over here.
Yeah, it's over there. Across River Road, and then that's where you play three, three through eight.
Yeah, so basically, all the traffic came in off of River Road and then had to get over to basically the east side of, of the golf course there.
Yep, get behind hole three, because then that's where we got a bridge and the lake connects to.
Where the holding ponds are, where the ponds are.
Yep, that's.
I'm just trying to, I mean, get around the whole idea, I mean, it's, it's our course, it's our stormwater system. We shouldn't have to ask for permission to go where we need to go, first of all. Second of all, like, I'm all, I kind of agree with you, if we wrecked something that wasn't ours, we should pay for it, but I don't know, I mean, I, I kind of agree too, like, if it, if it's in the state of twenty years old, I don't want to pay replacement cost for it either, so, I don't know. Do you have the areas that you replaced last year, or?
Yeah, Jason had, well, last year, well, I can show, I know where they're at, they're very distinctive.
And what kind of damage was it, it's just ruts, or is it actually through it?
There's a few spots that, I mean, I question if the hitch didn't bottom out on the asphalt, you know, it's you know, that's a lot of it, is you can see the wheel indentations on the road.
Well, it's just odd that there'd be wheel indentations, because it was frozen still then, so.
No, it wasn't, it was, it was thawing out, and I think that, that's the issue. Because the ground was, you know.
I mean, that's why we have water problems.
It's really soft, you could drive the same truck out there right now, I don't think you'd have an issue. So it was the timing.
Ground was pretty saturated right then, everywhere, that whole end of town was so saturated.
Better.
The frost layer was coming up at the same time, and it almost doubles here.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Murphy, when will we hear on the FEMA claim?
What was that?
Carla.
Carla.
May I speak? So when we, we've already spoke to FEMA last week, Jeff Bushy and I, and Jason, and we told them about the claim, we told them about the insurance would cover half, and all she asked was what documentation for Valley Golf and what the lease agreement, which we sent to her, and it does sound like they possibly, I, I think it's a good chance they will pick up the fifty percent, isn't that what you got, Jeff? Yes, they were, they're, they're going to look at it very seriously. So I guess the other thing is, if we could have some kind of documentation, you, patient on what you just said, how you'd fix it, that would actually probably help with FEMA, so they know it's not something that was twenty years old, that was never been fixed. You guys have maintained in it, and we wrecked it. So if we could get maybe, you know, a statement for you, that, don't you think that'd be good, Jeff? So, we, and we will, we're putting that stuff together for them now, and we will meet with them again on October fourth.
Okay, so I'm in agreement, if we wrecked it, we need to replace it, hopefully FEMA is going to come through, and whatever FEMA doesn't cover, our insurance company should cover. If that doesn't cover it, then general fund.
Thank you.
One, one question then.
Sure.
When can I have the project go forward?
Next year.
When, when we know, yeah.
Well, don't you have to pay on performance, you can't give them money for nothing, can you? Don't you have to do it beforehand?
You're talking about with the contractor?
With FEMA? Well, yeah, I mean, don't you usually have to?
Well, I see what you mean, you mean, when you.
You have to have an actual number, you can't just base it on an estimate, I wouldn't think, or a quote, can you?
Well, we, well, I believe, I guess this is where maybe Jason would help it, but I believe the, I believe the you said the, the low proposal was sixty-two thousand six hundred, I believe that's, that's a hard number that they would do with that, do it for that amount.
And I have talked to Jason to see if we could possibly still get it done this fall, because that would make it easier, and then the claim would be closed with FEMA. I know we ran into that with the River Road, and so, you know, it was out there for a couple of years, I know we can get an extension, but we did talk about to see if, if there's any way to get that done this fall still, to get it done. Because it makes it easier for you, makes it easier for us in reporting.
If you can get it done.
We have talked to Jason about getting it done, and that, I think that's part of the reason it's came to you, that if for some reason, you know, the funding doesn't go through, then it's okay for us to do it.
We need to vote next week on something?
Uh, what, I'll, I'll check with Jason to see if he, if he has two quotes, and we can probably bring it to the proposal to be voted on on Tuesday.
I believe, I believe the, the council will be able to take action on it next week.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Move on to number five, consider asphalt overlay on Sixth Street Northwest, Mr. Murphy again.
Thank you, and again, I will do my best, I know Steve has been involved in this here as well, this one probably should be the easiest. This Sixth Street Northwest at the intersection of Central Avenue there is, as everybody knows, in quite poor condition with multiple potholes and those types of things, so. According to Public Works Superintendent, it's not really cost effective anymore to patch those potholes, but the area does need an overlay. So he did get some quotes for that, for the overlay, and the low quote was with OP Construction for twenty-six thousand eight hundred. So what he's looking for is a recommendation then to have the council approve at the next meeting to hire OP to do that project for twenty-six thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, just one question, did someone confirm with Avril's that we, we would get the three thousand dollar MOB charge? So that they are in fact high?
That, that's a question we should probably ask for Jason, because when I looked at this, this afternoon, I kind of questioned that too, because if that charge, that mobilization charge would not be charged, they would be the low bid then, so. So that's probably something we need to confirm with Jason.
Okay, yeah, I'm in favor of the project, just it's got to go to, to the low bidder, and if they're not going to charge MOB, then it's Avril's.
Yep.
Just have to ask the elephant in the room. Is this different and should not be specially assessed? How is it different from that, that big chunk of concrete to the south of Highway Two on Fifth? How's it different?
I don't believe.
You waiting for someone to answer here, or you just rhetorically asking?
It may be rhetorical.
Okay.
I answered though.
Anything else, Mr. Murphy, on that?
Nope, I think we have our direction.
Okay, sounds good. Move on to number six, discussion on hiring incentives for police department.
Thank you, this was before the council once before, to get authorization for me to, to meet with personnel, committee, meet with the unions, and come, could come back with a proposal, excuse me, for hiring incentives for the police department. As I referenced last time, there are not enough police officers in the, in the training right now to cover the open, the openings that are open now and will be opening. So there, there is a gap, quite a significant gap of officers. Virtually all cities are, are short of police officers, and there, we have already had some police departments fold. Most, probably the closest would be Morris, where they shut down their police department because they could not, because they could not keep enough officers to, to keep it viable. The estimate, estimate is that this is only going to get worse before it gets better. So with that said, cities are needing to, it's getting much more competitive for, for the officers that are viable to, to do the job. So what, what I predict, what I think is going to happen is cities that, that want to retain police staffed and quality police departments are going to have to move away from what are previously accepted hiring and retention practices and utilize incentives and then non-tangible perks to attract qualified candidates. Some of the things that are being advertised and what officers from what we're hearing are looking at outside of monetary is they're more likely to want to go to a community that's more police friendly than say, one that potentially could be more hostile towards the police. They're going to want to look at things that maybe are more enjoyable for young, younger officers. Perks like football games, local teams, those types of things. So in that, I think we do have some of the intangibles for that, we are a fairly police friendly community. There is a fair amount to do up here in the greater Grand Forks area for people to do. The one issue we do have is location, it's going to be, it's hard to attract people, particularly from the metro, to move to this part of the state. So with that being said, we're looking at, what I'm proposing is hiring bonuses, a retention bonus to keep current officers from moving to other departments, and a relocation bonus. So the number that was put out is a hiring bonus of five thousand. That would be paid out in two parts, twenty-five hundred to start, and twenty-five hundred after successful completion of the field training. And a relocation bonus of up to twenty-five hundred dollars, based on how, where they potentially be moving from and what their actual expenses for relocation would be. So it wouldn't be just automatic, but it would be based on, on what their expenses would be. And then finally, a retention bonus of five thousand dollars, because the, with the, with the lack of officers coming out of the training academies with, and through post, becoming post-licensed, what's going to end up happening is with the incentives, those types of things, it's going to be, they're going to be taking officers from other departments, they're going to be move, potentially moving to department that's, has a more officer friendly, has a higher wage, those types of things. So with that, to try to keep your experienced officers and your longer-term officers, we'd be looking at a retention bonus of five thousand dollars that would be paid out throughout the year, rather than in one lump sum. So that is the proposal, Crookston is currently hiring, having a three thousand dollar hiring bonus. Other cities are doing incentives, plus they're also upping, cities are upping their wages, they're paying more for police officers, just with their general wage outside of incentives and bonuses. So with that, I will take any questions.
Couple of questions that you have, on the retention bonus, what are, what parameters, I mean, so retention, are we talking somebody that's you went through your hiring bonus, and then two years later, you're getting a retention bonus? I mean, what are the parameters that are being set up?
Yeah, it would be, once they would be done with their, their preliminary year after their second year, starting with their second year, they, they would be eligible for it, under the proposal right now.
So within two years or three years, they'd get ten thousand dollars, you're saying?
That could work that way, yes.
We have to clear this through the union, or do we do it at our discretion that we can pull it?
Do we have to clear this through the union or do we do it at our discretion that we can, uh, pull it off the table anytime we want? Or do we have to clear it through them and they kind of control the first string?
Does this become a memo of understanding, is it what?
Well, yeah, that's what I, what I would put into the memorandum, memorandum of understanding. We would have memorandum of understanding with the union for these, these incentives. I would want to have a clause in there as conditions change that we would be able to adjust this as need be. Yep.
Another thing, the Minnesota Sheriff's Association is doing something similar with their hiring things too. I think they're in the $2,500 range. They haven't approved it. I think it's just going through their process. I would like to see that they don't get the $10,000 bonus. It's got to be, they either do one or the other. They can say, we'll, we'll wait and, and do it to retain them or we can take and, uh, and do it at initial hiring, the 2,500 plus 2,500. As you're talking, they can come back in two years and get another 5,000, right?
Yeah, the, the, the way it's set up now is the, you would have the, the hiring incentives of the 2,500 for when you'd start, 2,500 after you could, can complete your field training. Then starting with, I guess how you'd want to define it, but starting on your second year, if you, so, uh, how you would define your second year, I guess, could be open for some interpretation, but, you know, we would, we would have to finalize that. But depending when, that, after you'd be through that first, your first year, then you would be eligible for the retention bonus.
How is this not going to carry over to all the other departments? Cause they're going to come and want the same.
That's a very good question and that, my answer to that is, um, the circumstances are not the same. We are not having the same issues with hiring of the other departments that we are with the police department. If I, if you don't indulge me and I'll, I'll go onto my own personal prediction of what might end up happening here. As, as this continues to get worse and is predicted to get worse, I think what's going to end up happening is, this is just my own personal prediction, is that cities will end up having to up the wages for their police department to the point where it's going to be the financial incentive to get into police work is going to outweigh the reasons that are keeping people out of police work right now. So, I mean, I think we could potentially see the market increase drastically for what police, police officers are getting paid, which would have to be gone through the union as well. I mean, it's, it's not a very pleasant thing to say, but, you know, it, we're, you have, we're having a hard time finding employees really for any departments. However, we are not having the lack of applicants and the difficulty in the, in all of our, in the rest of the city that we are with the police department. The last applicant, last round we had, we had one applicant and it was, that applicant was really not hirable.
So I, I'm going to go back to retention bonus, because I want to make sure I understand this correctly. So does, let's say, an officer that's not being hired and is working for East Grand Forks currently, do they automatically for the 26 pay periods, let's say with this one in effect in 2023, are they going to get the $5,000 over this 26 pay periods for 2023?
Yes, as proposed, yes.
So our first year, bulk of the money is going to be sent out?
Retention. The bulk of money will be retention, yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding this, how you're getting, you're laying this out because.
Cause we have, right now we have two, we have two openings, um, for police officers right now. So if we, the 5,000 for that, that would be, you know, if we had both of them in that, that time period, it'd be $10,000. The retention bonus will be significantly more than that.
So the budgeting impact on here of $115,000 per year, is that just for 2023? If we had hired those two people, the hiring on bonuses and the retention bonuses, is that $115,000, is that?
Yeah, correct me where I'm correct, but that is, that is for, that's, that's, uh, the two, the two new, the two open positions and the retention bonus for our current officers.
So then in 2024, unless we hired somebody on and then the person, let's say the two people, we might have a retention bonus possibly in '24.
Depending when they started.
Yes, yes, so correct. Just for, just play, humor me on this.
You are correct.
2024 would be down to $10,000 if they hired on at the right time. So.
We, 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 it would be decreased by $10,000.
But they would get the 5,000 in the next year. So can I just explain a little bit?
It'd be only $10,000 in 2024 if the people started now. But I know we had 115 next year. That'd be your retention bonus for everybody that's already here. Plus you have the 10, 5, 10,000 for the new hires.
Correct.
So that's all in that 115.
Yep.
Okay. So year '24, we don't have any retention bonuses anymore.
No, the, no, the retention bonuses.
Every year?
Retention bonuses were anticipated to be, to be continuing.
Cause that's not written out here and that's why I'm asking the question.
Retention bonuses are basically.
Cause it says per, I know that. You know, I guess, I, I want to make sure we're doing the right thing. And I know that this has been brought up, looking at this, especially for the 2023 budget when we're looking at it. This is included in it, at the 19%. So I, I guess, don't get me wrong, and I still don't get me wrong, you know how I stand, I'm behind the police department. I just want to make sure we're doing this correctly in the right way and that we're not, we're setting this up to be, could be ongoing, oh, until we revoke it.
Yep, correct.
Could it be 10 years? Could it be five years? Could it be three? I don't know. So you're looking at what, almost 2% increase?
Correct.
Every year?
Just, just for the police department.
Just want to make sure we, we're processing this correctly. I want to make sure I'm processing correctly, because it is a, not only do we have majority of our annual budget for employees and benefits, this is going to go on top of it, so it's going to be even more. So, is, Mr. Riappel, you said something?
Can we do an eligibility, uh, where it's like every two years or every three years that they qualify for it? That way retain, retain them for three, then they do it again, they, they work another three and they can apply again. Instead of doing it every year, because if we're just going to give them a bonus, we might as well give them a raise.
That was discussed, however, that is much more difficult for, for do, for just giving a, a, a raise. And that's something, if, if I can get on my soapbox here for a minute, that's something that's going, that cities are going to have to deal with and I think is going to have to be addressed by the league of Minnesota cities and potentially the, the legislature. Because, uh, the problem is going to get worse before it gets better. And what's probably going to end up happening then is, like I said, cities are going to have to end up paying more for their police officers on a per hour basis until we get, until we get more people into the profession. With that being said, that will throw off, we, and we can't do that right now the way it is with how, how the, um, our wage studies are, you know, as far as the, the level of, it would throw that, it would throw our, our wage comparisons off. And I think that's an issue that will have to be addressed at the state level here in the very near future.
Throwing it out there.
Yep.
I'm just going to, one point and I'll go, Mr. Larson, on, you said, Mr. Riappel mentioned, you know, and looking at this. Thing that came in my mind right away, are, is there a process or a thing we're looking at, let's say that an officer, heaven forbid that there's an issue that they aren't at standards. Is there qualifications that will be put into this that they would not get the retention bonus? I know this is going to be a union question because it's.
I guess I, I haven't discussed.
ISO if you want to.
Yeah.
But he's leaving, oh my gosh. The cops.
ISO comes up and everybody walks out.
I don't mean to be intimidating. Um, so yes, the retention bonuses for every year. The discussion early on was, yes, we need new people, but we have to tell the people that are here not to leave. State Patrol has 60 openings this year. They're offering laterals. You keep whatever wage you have now and more. Accelerated Academy, if you look on the post board website, everyone is offering something. We're offering nothing. So that's how this discussion started. To answer your question, if you don't meet standards, you do not get your wage step. There's never been an attachment to the retention thing, because in my opinion, as a training officer, we could fix that most of the time. If we don't want you here, then we get rid of you. We don't worry about the retention bonus. You're just gone. The other thing on the two to three years, it's been split out amongst every paycheck. We talked about lump sum at the beginning. What if they leave in three months? Are you going to go try and recoup that? That's impossible. So we split it out across the 20, uh, 12 months, every paycheck. If you stay here the whole year, you get the whole thing.
Yeah, cause I can see some of this up and leaving after they get the bonus.
I think. Yes, you can, you can probably revoke it at one point. It is intended to be an MOU. I would strongly caution against telling a bunch of employees that they're not worthy anymore and we're taking that back. Will it come up in a discussion of contracts? Absolutely. If you want to revoke it, I'm maybe getting ahead of myself, but I'm going to do it anyway. If you wanted to revoke a retention bonus, the discussion is in the union negotiation, contract negotiation. We're not going to do the bonus anymore, however, we're going to do this and that's discussed amongst the personnel committee and the.
The reason I asked, the, if, the process has gone through about the retention bonus of, like I said, for the record, I am 100% behind the, okay. Just want to make sure that we have an understanding that the anticipation of you getting a retention bonus is that you are doing your job, okay? And that we see that you should be given this and we would hope that there won't be any issues. I just want to make sure the discussion was had when you guys went through these, that how these are sent out and given, that it's just not up, we're just, here you go. I get, we have issues. I get that there's hiring problems.
So you're saying if, for example, if an officer that is past the field training and is, is a full-time experienced police officer and is having, is not meeting standards, would they get it?
But, I mean, the question's going to come, someone's going to ask it, so I'm going to ask it now.
So here's my question.
To clear it up.
In the history of history, have we ever told somebody they're not succeeding and telling them they're failing and not gotten rid of them? In my experience, writing the evaluations, being evaluated, we're going to fix the problem before it gets to the evaluation. And if it gets to that point, we're, we're looking at termination. We're not worried about retention. So totally agree.
I'm not questioning that, how you guys operate or anything like that, but I just want to make it sure it's the discussion you guys thought about it. You guys went through it, you had, and just.
It would be an easy thing to add and I think it would be, uh, acceptable. If they do not meet standards, they don't get the next step and one sentence, they also don't qualify retention. Because we don't want to retain them if they're not getting the clue. And I don't know if that disrupts the, the plan and the proposal, but.
It does not.
Question, that's my answer.
As far as I'm concerned, it does not.
If you don't meet standards, you also don't qualify for the retention bonus. And that's a little incentive to, hey, fix yourself.
No, I totally, I just wanted to make sure.
I, I haven't thought of it. I, maybe I'm a little more optimistic about the people.
Well, no. You don't need to camp up at my house anymore right now. That's, I'm okay.
Thanks. Please do though, yeah.
So I think the one question you did have though is if somebody is new, so they get hired January 1st, you pay them the 2,500 now and six months you pay the other 2,500. So in the next January 1st, they would be ready for the retention. That's correct. So in essence, our budget should stay the same every year because we paid the 5,000 for them for the sign on in the half year and they don't get the rest till January. So that's another 5,000, right?
It's basically a $5,000 per employee every year.
Correct. So that 115 should stay consistent unless we up the number of post patrol staff that we have, right?
Which, the 23s.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, uh, I don't have any comments on the program. Like, you know, my, my comment is more just on the overall impact to the city budget. I think we're doing this backwards. I'd rather see the city budget set, see the police budget set for '23 and then we develop a program that fits within that budget. I'm afraid that if we were to move forward on this now, something maybe changes, uh, as the budget is finalized. And then we missed an opportunity to make this easier. So I'm not for or against the program. In fact, I'm strongly in favor of obviously figuring out this problem. I just think we're doing it backwards.
And I think it was brought up so it can be talked about overall as a budget, correct David?
Correct.
Yeah. So that's why it's brought up, so you can just talk about this, but you know, there will be discussion with it in the actual budget and it's your prerogative on how you want to proceed with that budget.
Yeah.
And if I may, and there also is a bit of a timing issue here as well, trying to get it in place for that as well. Because we, like I said, we're, we're already two officers down and, and we're not able to fill.
I understand that, you know, Chief Headland wants this to be out, okay, I'm posting these two openings and here's our incentives. I totally understand that. Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've got a bunch of stuff I'm thinking about, but I don't know, I don't know how to get it all out. While we know that this is a national issue, you know, we know that there's places all over that are facing the same issue. And we know that there's places that are worse hit and better, you know, better off. I tend to think that we're actually in a better market for a bunch of reasons, just because I think we're a great community. Maybe that's my own bias. Um, but like you said, there's people that are bouncing around. What I don't want to do is kind of aid to that bouncing around, like I think kind of the retention thing is beneficial in the idea that it's not just, we're just chasing the, the bonuses. Not that it's, I'm not putting it on any person, but that's just a typical thing, right? That's what's happening in the job market right now is people are following the money they're chasing around. I don't want to exacerbate that. I don't like the relocation bonuses. I don't think they, in my opinion, I don't think they're proven to be real effective. Only in super high, high-end careers do I think that really makes a big difference. I think the biggest problem with relocation with us is, is really two things. Number one, typically when people relocate here and then, and they're from here, they're the first ones out too. I mean, we see them a lot, they come in and then they're out. Um, so I don't want to spend a lot of, but the, the other factor is often, it's secondary things. It's really like having access to work for their spouse, your husband or their wife or whatever, is really a big issue. It's probably way more of a deal than, you know, $2,500 is going to be for them to relocate. So I just don't think our bang for the buck on the relocation is a big deal, uh, or is an important thing. I wouldn't spend the money on that. Hiring bonuses, I've kind of go back and forth, because I know it's a problem. Part of me thinks, oh, question to, would this be included as part of compensation then for, like when we go through our market analysis on a five-year basis or whatever we do? Does that get rolled into when we do our market analysis with, you know, other communities? And we start looking at what other communities are offering and stuff? How does that get applied?
My understanding of it is it would not.
And don't forget PERA.
Well, that's, and that.
Cause it's not PERA only.
Right. And that's what my second thing is, is I mean, for the city on a financial side, I mean, it, if it's a bonus, it, it isn't eligible for, like PERA, like you said, or health insurance offsets or any of those type of things. I don't know what the tax, that would be. Clarence is always the guy that talks about this on our, in our committee or whatever. But, you know, I don't know what the tax advantage or disadvantage for our employees is by taking it as a bonus. But I know that for the city, obviously we don't have some of those, you know, attached costs to wage, which is a decent thing for us. But go ahead, Clarence.
But what I was going to say is, and that's part of the issue, the reason why we're doing it over the 26 pay periods, because they're not taxed at a higher rate, because it's a bonus, a one-time bonus. So by doing that for 26 pay periods, it just kind of runs through the regular tax, right Clarence?
But it's not considered a wage, right? It's considered.
Right, it would be, you know, we'd have a bonus line on there, just like we have a separate account for this, this dollar amount, so we'll track it.
We don't pay the additional PERA.
Correct, we looked into that, clarified.
So, I mean, for some.
We'll pay FICA.
Right, what's that?
We will pay FICA.
FICA, right.
Yes.
And all the other taxes.
And Medicaid.
Yeah, but, um, how does this affect our, um, you know, our, uh, you know, the same thing that we had with longevity? You know, when we had, when we got away with longevity, it was primarily because of, uh, what you call it, what is it? I'm drawing a blank right now.
Merit pay.
Not merit pay, it's the, uh.
I, I did a little bit of checking on that, because longevity was actually gone before I got here.
Right.
And from what I, from what I was told is then that the longevity pay was then, then the next contract was put into their wages.
Right, but it was because of, what's the state?
Seniority?
No, the state guidelines for equal pay for women.
Pay equity. There you go. Thank you.
And that's why it's 5,000 across. We talked briefly about if you're here longer and stay longer, you get paid more, and that overcomplicates everything, and we're right back to longevity again. That's why it was 5,000 for every officer across.
And that, that meets the, the pay equity test? I don't, I don't know enough about how that all gets going.
Paying everybody the same thing. I guess that's the definition of that.
Yeah.
Well, but it's, it's not just within the department. I mean, it's across classes and it's across, I mean, the reason why it's a problem with like other classes, I mean, not everybody had longevity or whatever. It was because certain departments had longevity.
Well, and that's why we're looking at it. That was one of the reasons why it's looked at as a, where it's being paid as a bonus rather than salaries is because it, it takes it out of that.
I guess my only thing is that we better make real sure because that's the, that's the slippery slope into giving, making sure we have to do this for every class or everything in, in our pay scale if that's what we're going to do. I would just make sure.
I can double check that, yes.
That's not going to affect that. The only other, I mean, I don't know what the, how effective these are. I mean, I, I don't know. There's, I haven't seen any studies or anything that says that these are super effective at doing this, especially when the market as a whole is down. You know, when the, when the job pool or the employee pool is way down. I, I mean, I think, I think it's, I don't, I'm very skeptical of how effective it is, except for the fact that it does prove that we do care about having these employees as a city or whatever, and we do care about this. I would say though that we should have, on any type of program like this, it should be sunsetted, I would say, three years or four years. Because we don't know what the, say, the state comes out and starts dumping $50 million into hiring bonuses and all these other things, and, and the problem ends up working itself out, you know? So I, I would, I would definitely think that we should have some sort of sunset if we want to do something like this.
How often are these contracts negotiated? Every four years?
Yeah, well, we do see two. Sometimes they're one year, sometimes they're two years currently.
The last couple have been three years. The last two have been three years.
Well, then that's what, that could be your sunset then when that, you know.
Yeah, but this isn't contract language though. I mean, I would have it right.
Put it in there. Brings in you on the contract.
It goes into an MOU, so that's why.
We can reopen the contracts because it reopens contracts across the city. We don't want to do that. And the next negotiation is, I think.
We're, we're due at the end of, our contract runs through December 31st, 2023.
I just had a couple other things while I'm standing here thinking is that, you know, in this whole discussion, training never came up. And there is a cost every time you get a new officer for training, and, and you know, a lot of that, those costs that 5,000 that you're going to give to the new employee is probably way less than what you, what the cost of training is. If you actually looked, yeah, you know, if you looked at what their actual costs are training, you know, this is really a savings to save on the training because training is very expensive for any position.
Sure. But I, I also think the open positions are probably more expen, I mean, when you factor in overtime and all that, that's way more expensive. I, I'm not afraid of spending money to fix this problem. I just want to make sure that if we do it, it's beneficial. Like Mark said, we want to make sure that when, if we do something like that, that we're not screwing you guys over, we're not screwing the city over, you know? And that when it comes time to do the next thing, that it gets accounted for too. That's my other thing is like, if we're going to give $5,000, that's, that should show up in market analysis.
The other thing I wanted to mention is, David, you talked about the, the state and have to have, do something about this. We do get a police aid every year, and so maybe that's something we need to talk to our legislators and say, you know, we need to up that aid to the cities because they have to do, they're doing these retentions, they're doing sign-on bonuses, and ask to increase the police aid that the cities are getting. So, you know, I know.
I hadn't thought of that.
We talked about, even tomorrow on one of our priorities, that we, we should talk about that, or Thursday we talked about it, that our priority is also talk to our legislators about the police aid and increase that because of the issues going on.
I was just going to add a note too to your thing is there are police stations that are closing, but there are some that are just popping up too. So Foster just added a police, police department too. So like I said, the, I mean, my point is, is I think there's, definitely can see that there's an issue, but I don't want us to go overboard and just like put this out there and it's ongoing forever and whatever. I, I think there's, especially in this area, I think that it's a fertile environment for having officers that thrive and want to be here, and I, I hope that, you know, and.
And your sunset comment, I don't think with the union that'd be an acceptable situation for them. And I don't know if we can put a sunset on this.
If it's a bonus.
Well, you could, you could do a bonus on a yearly basis and just keep rolling it over if that's what you wanted to do. This is a memorandum of understanding. You can do anything that you want or nothing at all. You know, I mean, so it's, and I'm on the police's side. I, I do this every, every day, but we had this, we had a big discussion regarding this and not, I mean, the big concern that the staff had at our meeting yesterday was on the retention bonus, paying it out on a monthly basis as opposed to twice a year or once a year to give somebody incentive to stay. Because once you give it to them on a monthly basis, the next month, there's no incentive for them to stay. You know, if you've got this $5,000 a year just automatically coming in. I know Mr. Murphy said that's not what the union wanted to do and, and different places are doing it, but just the retention portion of it, if I know that I got $5,000 coming to me on December 31st, and I'm thinking about leaving, I'm not going to leave before December 31st.
I'm going to leave on January 1st.
Yeah, well, then you might. But you might stay for the next six months because I know at December 31st, I got my $5,000 bonus as opposed to getting 4,000 or 400 bucks a month on a monthly basis. I can leave at any time, and it's not going to make any difference if I find that job. And that, and I, I just bring it up because it was one of the big points that Reed brought up and that we were talking about at the staff meeting.
It, there is a point to that. So say if you're, if you're halfway through the year and you're 25 into 5,000 bonus and someone else is going to give you $5,000 to come over, well, there's no disincentive. There's, you know, the retention.
No, but then I don't have to pay it out.
The retention incentive goes away. If, if it is at the end of the year, then if there is a, then you wait, like you said, then you wait and gave it till the first or whatever, and then you get that. But then you're not on the hook for the next, any other money. I don't know. I don't know what the game or the, the best thing is. I, my, my only point with the sunset is that if the bonuses are to fix or a problem that we perceive or that is real, it should be for that problem. It isn't, it isn't a change. It's not, this isn't a, a contract negotiation where we're discussing what the market value of, of the, of the different positions are. This is to address a problem. And if the problem goes away, we should evaluate that on an ongoing basis and say, well, what would be the trigger? You have to say, how do you turn it off? You know, if all of a sudden we're getting 15 applicants again and they would be able to hire one or two from there, is that mean that either A, we need to maintain, or does that mean that the problem nationally or statewide is gone away? I don't know.
Did it happen because we have the bonuses? Is that why we're getting them?
Or like I said, I, I think because this is a national problem, because this is a state problem, there's going to be efforts at both of those levels to dump boatloads of money into the problem, hopefully. I hope. And my point is, is if at some point all that money starts working and you get classes back in the academies that are what they should be, then the bonus, the need for the bonus goes away. Right? I, I, I don't know.
Well, yeah, and I mean, I don't want to get too far into the weeds here, you know, and, and too far into this, but that, that has been a discussion that's been going on here for a little bit as well. And with the idea of, yeah, if you put more money into it, you, you up the wages, you do these things, and like I said earlier, where if we get to the point where you finally get the wages high enough that it's, it overrides the, the disincentive for the publicity, you know, the, the, for the reasons why people don't want to be in, in law enforcement, and they're going it simply because it's pays so well, you know, to try to get the people in there. It, it's not really a good solution either because then you're, you have police officers that are there motivated by the money, not motivated to serve their community, not motivated to try to help.
I don't know. I, I think there's people that are in every career that are motivated by all kinds of different things. And money happens to be one of them that they're all.
Well, yeah, and I guess what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is I don't see it really changing significantly until there's a, a shift in, in public opinion of police officers and what police officers go through. But that's just my personal opinion.
So the sunset was when the problem is solved. You're correct. When is the problem solved? What's the metric for that? What is, when we have 100 applicants? When we go without shortage for six months?
I don't know. That's my point is, is but there's nothing in here now. I would say, to me, I don't think there has to be maybe a hard set. I think you set it at a three-year, and then in three-year you readdress the problem. Is there still a problem? And that becomes a policy decision at the board. And I guarantee you, knowing boards, there's zero, there's, I, I won't say zero because there, there's very little chance that they're going to say no to a bunch of police officers coming here that are going to say, take my 5,000.
And the issue with this rebuttal is if you then rescind it, what message does that just send to 20-some employees? So is there a way?
Well, what's the, what's the message we're sending by giving it? Is it that you're valuable and that there is a problem and we want you here?
Amazon, other agencies?
Right.
We want you to stay here.
Right.
And I don't, I don't have an answer for your sunset unless you just threw a random number of three years or tie it to the next negotiation. I don't know. I, I'm not, I don't have a suggestion. But if the problem appears to be solved and the chief comes before you and says, I've had no problem hiring people, I've had no problem keeping people, then next union negotiation, I think would be just time to, hey, that MOU, we're going to go away with that MOU. Let's discuss your next negotiation, next, uh, next contract. And I don't know if that needs to be in the language, but that's how I pictured this going.
Maybe do five-year contracts anyway.
Anybody else have any questions? I mean, what is your plan with this, Mr. Murphy?
Make it very.
It's under discussion. Thank you, Asil. You have it under discussion purposes on the agenda. Are you looking to sending something next Tuesday for a vote? Or are you going, coming back with this?
Yeah, I would like to. Yeah, I would like to bring it back with, at the next council meeting and have the council authorize me to put together an MOU agreeable between.
Next Tuesday you're asking this?
Yes.
I do have a question. I thought, what is, does it, you can stay there. What's the cost to go to the academy about? Like if you were going to go, or I guess there's different avenues, right? I mean, you can do.
So Minnesota is a strange state. Do you want to become a police officer? It's on you and your budget to go figure it out. Go to the academy on your own dime. Take the test, and when you're tested and trained, you start and we put you right into FTO. State Patrol is different. State Patrol will put you through their academy, but otherwise everywhere else in the state. St. Paul's got their own academy. Minneapolis, I think, got their own academy. But in Minnesota, the training academy is done on the applicant, not the department. Now, there's basic stuff the department has to do for new people, and it's part of their, so we do have to send them to certain cult courses like pit maneuvers, driving. That has to be done as part of their licensing, and that all gets dumped on that first year. So I don't have a dollar figure for that.
Okay.
I don't have a budget, but the academy is done by the applicant.
And it's like, is it like college?
It's, it's Alexandria State Tech.
Okay. So I mean, it's similar to a state SU or a state.
It depends what you go to. There's two avenues.
I mean, you can do the criminal justice.
You can do the technical college portion of it, or you can do the.
I got a bachelor's degree, and then I went to a summer academy, and that's it.
I guess my thought was is if, if we have a problem too, is, is there a benefit to saying, we would pay 20,000 for an applicant to go to school with five-year guaranteed trip? Now, obviously you have to make it through and all, that becomes an investment on our, which has risk, obviously, right?
And someone to manage all of that. And I don't know who would be able to, I want you to go, I want you to sign this contract, and if you bail on the contract, we've already paid for your school. And then Mr. Galston's involved, and we've discussed that. I don't see it plausible.
Well, I mean, businesses do it quite often, right? I mean, it's a scholarship.
They have HR directors that handle it.
We, we have an HR department, pretty sure.
I'll bring her in and ask if she wants to bring it up.
I'm just saying, I mean, if, if it's something, I just believe, I mean, whether it was linemen or whatever, homegrown is the best grown for here. People will be, if they're from here or around here, they will tend to stay here. They'll be great officers, not that other people aren't, but they, they have an innate sense of where they're from. They know people. They care, you know, in their soul about this place. I just, I, I think if we could figure out, I would, if we're going to spend $100,000 on retention or incentives, maybe $20,000 a year for some sort of a scholarship for people in and around here to come and, and say five years of service.
We have nonprofits in the city, the Iron Peaks Motorcycle Club, for instance, that has given scholarships to two of our officers. You're from here, we're going to help you go to school because we want you to stay here, and it's been working. Don't need the government involvement for that part. We do, are doing scholarships because we want to see this agency succeed. So for instance, the MC is doing that. But it's, here's your scholarship. We hope you come back. Just remember where you got the money from, and we do it that way. We've got lots of homegrown East Grand Cops, and we'd like to see it stay that way. And the more we keep here and the safer we keep this place and make it, hey, maybe that's something I do want to do. Maybe we change the guidance counselor's opinion. So they told me not to do this. They told me there was, there was too many cops, you'll never get a chance. Well, four years later, I got my degree, it changed. And now it drastically changed in the last two years. And everyone is doing something, and we're doing nothing, and we're paying for it. Morehead right now had zero applicants, were too op, too open. They had to go to Alexandria and beg a couple guys to please promise he'll come to us. That's the state of the, of the state.
So what is Morehead offering?
Uh, don't know. I was just told today by a VCA agent that they had zero applicants. They are offering, I'm sure they're offering sign-on bonuses, et cetera. I don't have the numbers in front of me.
But that's my point is how do we know that even adding this is going to, if they're getting, if they're already doing this and they're getting zero, like, I'm just wondering, is there a different way that we could think about this? I mean, I don't know.
We could, I intend to absolutely look at that and work with the chief on that, but in the meantime, there has to be something. And if it, if it means figuring out a way to do a scholarship or something else, some other outside the box idea, we're go, we're good with that, but it's been a few months now and we're running with no officers, what?
Try this first and, and if it doesn't work, we can always make.
We revisit the MOU. Hey, that whole sign-on thing didn't work and the retention, everybody left anyway, let's revisit that.
Carla, please.
We have a really good means to try recruit that homegrown because the Wave Academy at the high school, you know, the police department can work extensively with them, try recruit students, you know, in the, from ninth grade up to show them that viable a police officer is, what the pay is, the community here supports you and we would like to have you. So we have a great opportunity that, to do that on a community with that Wave Academy.
So, right before I went to Iraq, I created the Law Enforcement Explorers post combined with Grand Forks. That still goes on, we're not putting as much effort into it as before, but that was teaching kids about law enforcement. I was an explorer, that got my interest in it. So there's an example of something we could be doing, um, to think outside the box, but in the meantime, we need to do something.
And I know, like you said, there's, Minnesota's an interesting animal, just, I mean, there's kids that I know that are, have gone through school in East Grand Forks that have chosen to go to the North Dakota route because it's all, like you said, the, the way they do it is more.
Yeah, they pay you to do it.
They pay you to do it, and then the, the post exam is not near as what it is on the Minnesota side, and people know that, whatever, so they wanna go that way. My point is, is that type of fostering, it's, the problem to me, while there is a, a financial component that can help, it's deeper, it needs something more. It needs, you know.
There's another idea being proposed by Vamiji that I'll discuss with Murphy at a later date, cause I'm over your time, but there are some outside the box ideas, we're thinking on retention as well, so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murphy, just bring it back and go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Move on to number seven, review proposed 2023 budget. Carla.
Okay, everybody, um, has a copy of what, um, the preliminary budget is, so, um, everybody put in what they want and needs were, and, um, the levy would be at nineteen percent if everything that's in here would stay in here. Um, we're open for suggestions on, um, savings items, but like I've said in the past, our departments, um, we're fairly lean on both employees and, on supplies and equipment. So our, I have to thank our departments for making my job easier by doing that. However, we do have to look at, is nineteen percent viable? Is it something you wanna do? So, um, a few things to keep in mind is that the preliminary levy is due September 30th, so that would mean we would need a preliminary levy at our council meeting, cause it has to be done at a council meeting next Tuesday. Um, we can not go up from a preliminary levy, we can go down, and most every year we have. And that, um, the other thing that we will vote on next week is that we will have a truth and taxation hearing, and we are tentatively set that for Tuesday, December 6th at 6:00 PM. I checked with the county and they're planning on doing, theirs on the 13th, so the 6th would be available for us. So any discussion or, I know we're all tired.
What have you heard on the health insurance? Where are we at?
We haven't, uh, we did not get enough.
If we're successful at getting it down, what would that do to the nineteen percent?
David, do you wanna answer that, please?
Um, well, as far as what it would do to the nineteen percent, I, I guess I can't answer that right now. Uh, we do have, um, we do have some indication that we could get into below twenty percent. Um, so what that would do, we, we haven't figured that out yet because we don't have that hard proposal to really base that off of yet. Um, we were looking at trying to do a, um, get a, a proposal from another company, however that would, that, that did not pan out, we didn't get the, we didn't get the, um, um, participation that we needed for that. Um, but we will be getting some bids from both Keep and Blue Cross Blue Shield, so, um, I'm sorry, excuse me. So indications are it will be under twenty percent, however, we, we don't have any hard numbers yet. So, and I guess I didn't wanna speculate on that.
That's fine. Didn't know where we're at with it.
No, it is looking, it is looking more positive.
So that nineteen percent, what is the total dollar amount of the increase of the health insurance right now?
Um, I, I don't have that number either. I know David and Terry have been working on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Yeah, I, I don't have that here in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay. I have a question for Carla. On the accounts, um, some fund balances, can you explain to me the account number four zero one listed as infrastructure? And the reason I'm asking this is I wanna know what we're using this for and why it's at one million, one seventy-two and change. I guess what's it for and is this can be used for projects that we're looking at or things that are in this budget that we can offset it with since it's been sitting there?
Okay, so the four oh one fund, um, is an infrastructure fund, it was used for capital projects during the flood, and so what we did was we, instead of borrowing money, we had gotten money, and we used that for assessments. We borrowed money from this water and light department to do some projects, and we have a loan with them and that's where the money comes out of, so that, that account fluctuates throughout the year. So if you notice, it went up and it was way higher in June because we just collected from the property tax first half from the county, and that pays for the bonds. So those special assessments came in, and then we're gonna have to pay water and light, just like we pay for our bonds, we pay them for the loan that we've taken out from them, but that's what that fund is.
So that one, anytime, does this get, go down to zero?
No.
And why do we keep the money? If we know we're getting stuff in and paying back to water and light, if this fund balance is sitting here, why is this not being utilized for some of the projects that we do?
And we do utilize it, so other years when we've had projects, assessment projects, and we haven't brought a bond forward, we didn't bring a bond forward because we use this account to do that. And then when we kept, we collect the specials for that account, we put them into that account. So if there's another project that comes along and we have enough money in that, we don't have to go outside and bond it, so then we don't pay the bond fees and those things. So that's, it's kind of like our capital improvement fund that we have for equipment. This is like our infrastructure special, special assessments fund, so we don't have to go outside and do bonding.
Me, it seems like it's a reserve account that's sitting there that we utilize, well, we wanna use, utilize it, so, um, I, I think we need to take a look at that.
Yep, and we, uh, if you'd sit down with me, I'll show you how, what projects we've used there in the past, and, you know, we use those instead of bonding, and, and then we didn't have the, the price of bonding, and then we collect the interest on it. So it has grown in other years, and yes, it would be something we could use in another project. And maybe that's something we look forward to, to when we do our special assessments, our mill and overlay in the next three to four years.
We're gonna have to set it at nineteen next week and then tell everybody in the city that's not gonna be there, but any else have any questions or Mr. Better?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to set it at fifteen next week. I think we're at the point where we can't nickel and dime it. I mean, I don't think, even if health insurance comes in at under twenty percent, that's not gonna bring us down to ten percent. Um, you're at the, we're at the point where every department needs to look at their staffing levels and decide, how are we gonna do things different with less people? Cause that's where you're gonna get your savings from.
This is just the preliminary, and I know fifteen would be nice, but wouldn't nineteen be a kind of a safety net in case we can't find those decreases?
Forces us to at least find four percent worth of decreases.
Should be trying to find four percent, five percent, whatever, whatever we do anyway.
Well, I agree. I don't wanna see a budget over seven percent. Let's just add just over eight, so why should we be at nineteen? Why should we be at fifteen?
And there are other creative things we could look at. Um, you know, at one time, some cities only had City Hall open four days a week, and all, I mean, we probably have to think outside of the box instead of also just looking at cutting positions. There might be some other ways that we can look at things, and that might be a discussion that department heads look at.
So four days a week, you get paid less than?
No, no, but you know, you could, no, but I'm just saying, some people did that. Schools did that, so, I mean, I just, I'm just, also don't want, I want you to all think out of the box in case there's things, you know, we can also, there are ways to increase revenue. What can we do to increase revenue? You know, do we have space to rent? Do we have other things, you know?
I know it's gonna be a, a tough battle to get down to where, I mean, we all know we're not gonna get down to the five, like we have been over the years, you know? If you look at the historical on there, last few years, it's been five percent, you know, I know we had anomalies, one was at twenty-four, one was about eighteen, I think it was.
Eighteen, yep.
Yeah, you know, we can go back to the negative one, but I won't bring that up. Um, uh, but I think, I think we're gonna have to sit down and we're just gonna, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Better, doing a fifteen, I feel more comfortable doing a nineteen and knowing that we're gonna get, have to get down to closer to that ten, you know? Um, and how we do it, that's why we have these smart department heads, figure it out.
Will we figure percentages?
What was that?
What do we figure, uh, like one percentage is, is it fifteen thousand, anybody?
Sixty.
Yeah.
Any else have anything for the budget? Not, entertain motion to adjourn.
Ooh.
You got it, Better?
I got it.
Second by Ripel. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion is carried, means adjourned.